Welcome, everyone. We have a few announcements this evening. September is National Library Card Sign Up Month. Stop by the library to register for a card to renew one that is no longer valid, or to simply come in and explore some of the wonderful resources that are available to you at the Grafton Public Library. A vaccine clinic for Grafton residents will be held at Municipal Center Gymnasium on Friday, September 27th from noon to 4:00 p.m. Call 774-502-0410. And that's probably, is that in our packet, that number?
I believe it is.
Okay, to register for a flu, shingles, COVID, or RSV vaccine. The Regional EV Expo will take place on Sunday, September 29th from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 50 Otis Street in Westboro. Volunteers from the area will be at this event with their electric vehicles to share their ownership experience and answer any questions from visitors. And the entry is free for that. And we will, we have no public hearings, so we'll move along to appointments. And the first up is Cultural Council. And it looks like we just have Catherine for that.
Hi.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking over there.
That's me.
You're in person again.
Yes.
Great. Hi.
Hello, Grafton Select Board.
Hi, there.
Just a little bit. I know that I indicated I had interest in a few different of the councils, the cultural and the Board of Health, primarily at the Cultural Council. I'll talk a little bit about my experience and that'll make a lot more sense.
Great.
So I'm very fortunate to have been a resident of Grafton for the past three years with my partner, who is a student at Tufts Vet School. I grew up in a small town in Maine called Kennebunk and went to school at Emerson College in Boston to study theater. I graduated with my BFA in 2020. And my entire life I have worked at or been a constituent of local, small arts nonprofits. While I was in college, I worked at Now &amp; There, which is a, now, which is a public arts nonprofit in Boston. It is currently known as the Triennial. And I worked primarily in development, so fundraising, helping secure different grants, actually looking at a couple of different grants from the Massachusetts Cultural Council, that sort of thing. And recently, I've had the opportunity to volunteer for some political campaigns and really enjoyed the process. So I'm hoping to get more involved in my community and see firsthand how small-town government works.
Great.
Thank you.
And so Cultural Council is kind of your first choice?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments from the board?
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Great. So hearing none, I will take a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Catherine Charlton to the Cultural Council.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I, my legal name is Catherine, but I go by Katie.
Okay, okay.
Decided to get part of getting helped.
That's great. Thanks, Katie.
Thanks for stepping up. Appreciate it.
You'll hear from the TA office with information to go to the clerk to get sworn in at some point.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, moving along to the Veterans Advisory Committee. Just looks like we have Yvonne. And she's on Zoom. I don't know, I went straight to Zoom on the other one. Sorry, everybody in person. Hi, Yvonne.
Hi there. I am, nice to meet everyone. My name is Yvonne Ashworth, and I've been a resident of Grafton for seven years now in North Grafton, and I've lived here before, too. So I applied for both the Board of Health and the Veterans Council. My interest primarily lies in the Board of Health. And I'll just give you a little background. I've been a nurse in the Commonwealth for 34 years. I currently work at UMass Memorial in the Ambulatory Surgery Department. I've been an EMT in Massachusetts previously, and was part of the NADIC Medical Reserve Corps, and now I'm in the Grafton, Greater Grafton Medical Reserve Corps. I was a part of Central Mass Search and Rescue. I'm not going to tell you everything I've been, but mostly in healthcare for the most of my adult life. So I'm very interested in being part of that board so that I can help with crises and prevention.
Any questions from the board? Go ahead, Andy.
Thank you. Just, I guess, a couple clarifiers. So first to Ms. Ashworth, like you said, you, you applied for Veterans Advisory and Board of Health. We have two applicants for Board of Health tonight. So you have the potential to be on both. Is there, do you have a desire to be on both still? Or?
I would love to also be on the Veterans Advisory Committee. My dad, I'm a Navy brat. So my dad was Korea Navy. I have, my entire family has been in the service, and it just, it speaks to me. So, yeah. I'm on a committee at work, too, through UMass Memorial, where we support veterans families.
And Katie, are you in the room?
Yes.
Okay, so, sorry, I shouldn't ask when you're not at the mic, but you're all set then just with the Cultural Council, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So it kind of brings that down to one person on the board, yeah.
That was my next question.
Okay, so Yvonne, you are interested in potentially both, Board of Health being first choice, and then you feel like you can take on both?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so let's just speak to the Veterans Advisory Committee. Is there any other comment from the board or questions?
No, Madam Chair.
Mr. Alamo.
I move the board vote to appoint Yvonne Ashworth to the Veterans Advisory Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, great. Congratulations, 5-0. Welcome to the Veterans Advisory Committee. And if you just want to stay put, we'll just quickly, potentially just, I'll hear a motion relative to the Board of Health position.
I'll offer a motion. I move the board vote to appoint Yvonne Ashworth to the Board of Health.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? And you have no concerns in just hopping on both?
Not at all.
Okay, great. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Welcome. That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Same, you'll hear from the Town Administrator's Office to go and get sworn in for both roles.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, moving along then to election workers.
Yvonne's a superstar. She's coming for this one, too.
Oh, dear.
Oh, boy.
Well, at least this one's a little bit of a less commitment, but...
An overachiever.
Somewhat, yeah.
Well, we have you. We have another one. Okay, so can hear a motion for election workers?
Okay. Madam Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Darren O'Neil and Yvonne Ashworth as election workers.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Great, so you have two new election workers as well. Thank you, Yvonne.
Thank you. Okay, now I have no more time.
We appreciate your time. Moving along to appointments, the Fire Chief. I think I can just take a motion for that.
Okay, I'll do that, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Evan Calderone as auxiliary firefighter at Station 2.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Is Evan here?
Auxiliary firefighters generally don't come in.
Okay, just checking to see if you wanted to...
Yep. Someone buzzing.
It's not me.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Don't mind me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
I hear it.
It's like a car alarm, maybe, or...
At least someone else hears it.
When the cameras get warm, the fan turns on.
Okay, maybe.
And the ACs...
I apologize.
That might be that.
Okay, moving along to new business, who I think, for which I think many of you are here in the room. So basically, we can maybe have the petitioner come up and just explain about the petition that you're going to bring to October Town Meeting. Basically, as we said, it's just to kind of fill us in on, on what this is about, so we know kind of going forward. And just make sure that you're speaking into the microphone, so Bill can pick you up.
Of course, I'm partially deaf, so I have a tendency to yell, aside from being 28 years military retired.
Okay.
So it's, just the way, unfortunately, it's the way it goes. And again, good, good evening, esteemed members of the Grafton Select Board. Let me introduce myself. My name is William Harris, and I'm a resident of Old Westboro Road. And the reason I'm standing before you fine folks here today is that I initiated and completed, and I had to do it twice, but I initiated and completed a petition for the installation of a sidewalk on Old Westboro Road, starting at the junction of North Street and Old Westboro Road, and terminating at the beginning of Wesson Road, where Holden Farm currently is. And the reasons for the sidewalk are several and reasonable. It's well-known that Old Westboro Road is a high-traffic road, since it's a connector between Grafton and Westboro. And it's the center of Grafton, and many commuters use the Old Westboro Road to circumvent the Route 1 to 22 and Worcester Road traffic, which is down by Lake Ripple. One of the other things, too, is, of course, you go to Westboro, it connects up to the Mass Pike the farther east you go. I would like to ensure a safe-walking and exercise environment for all pedestrians and my fellow residents of Old Westboro Road, bicyclists, children, pets, and delivery drivers that are currently at risk of being struck by passing motor vehicle traffic. Many residents walk, bike, walk pets, or walk just simply down North Street going to elementary school, which is the kids, in the morning and the evening hours, either before or after work. And since this is during the commuter-vehicle movement, they are at higher risk of being struck. There's been multiple incidents of near misses where motor vehicles have come within mere inches of striking pedestrians on Old Westboro Road. And I can attest to this, I've had several close calls myself. I go out and I run in the morning, I take my dogs out. I had several incidents where, in fact, one gentleman I can remember, as he went by, literally, he was about from here to that desk, and he was moving quick. And if there had been a sidewalk there, it would not have been that incident. Several of my fellow residents, fellow neighbors, are the same way. They go out and they walk in the mornings and the evenings, either before or after work, and they run the high risk of getting hit. And actually, on August 21st, 2024, at 6:30 p.m., right in front of my house, a FedEx driver got hit, getting out of his vehicle. And the reason for that is, if you take a look at my yard, I've got a drop right next to the road, where if he'd gotten out on that side, he would have fallen down about a foot and a half. So he had no choice but to get out on the other side, and that's where he got hit. So if there had been a sidewalk there, he could have gotten out, waited a second, and then be able to go do his delivery. And he did sustain contusions. Myself, I'm a former postal worker. I worked for Grafton Central. There were a couple of times, and I'm driving a white LLV with red and blue stripes on it with flashing yellow markers, and this guy came around the corner at the very top of Old Westboro Road, and I was getting out, of course, the driver's side is over on the right. And it was good that I was getting out on that side. Had, had I had no other choice, he would have hit me. He was moving pretty quick, too. The town of Grafton Police have done an admirable job of trying to keep the speeding flow of traffic down. But town law enforcement does not have the manpower to assign an officer constantly on Old Westboro Road in order to prevent serious injury. Installing a sidewalk would not only be beneficial to our fellow residents, but the surrounding community residents, who would like to have pedestrian access to nearby Holden Farms for activities that are held there, or access to North Street to go down to the center of town, to walk down to the center of town for events that are held by town organizations. It would also be beneficial for such activities as Halloween, where children have safe access to homes without the risk of getting bagged. Within the abutment of 12 homes in one area, the area that I live in, there are 13 children under the age, 12 children under the age of 13, one of them being my daughter. Another reason for the installation of a sidewalk on Old Westboro Road would be for drainage and water control, and that's been a major problem up where in our area, in fact, a good stretch of Old Westboro Road, is drainage and water. If a sidewalk were to be installed, water and runoff can be directed to a specific point and reduce the issue of standing water and erosion. In conclusion, I fully realize that the cost would be significant, but the benefits would far outweigh the detractors, especially if it comes down to somebody either getting hit or seriously maimed, which it is going to happen eventually. I spent 28 years in the Army, making sure that every route that my men ran down, they were going to come back with all arms and all legs, and not in a black bag. And I make sure of that. And I got very good at it, and none of them did. It's the same thing here, although they're not my soldiers. They are my friends, compadres, and I want to make sure that they're able to go home, their kids, their grandkids, in good ways. Retrospect and reactive measures are not acceptable where an incident could have been prevented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Alamo.
Just a, a comment, I guess. I signed on to this petition. I have to be very public about the fact that I live on Old Westboro Road, so this would benefit me. But I'll echo the concerns about the traffic on Old Westboro Road. I, at one point, was on a run, and there was a dog that got hit by a, a car while I was on, it was super traumatic. It happened right in front of me. And it was because the car was just coming around the corner, couldn't see the dog. There's like, there's a couple of really bad corners on Old Westboro Road, where you just, it's a blind corner for somebody taking it. My wife walks almost daily on that road, and I'm nervous every time she leaves. I guess the last thing that I'll say is, this board has always discussed that there's a significant differentiating, differentiating benefit to put sidewalks in areas that are close to schools. This would connect lots of housing to the North Street School as well, so, and it would connect to the sidewalk that already goes to North Street. So we'd have a long stretch of connected sidewalk, which is obviously beneficial as well. So I think this is a good idea, but obviously, there are some financial concerns, so I would defer a little bit to analysis from, from Paul in the DPW Department as far as, you know, are there better places in town to, to put a sidewalk? But I do think this is a really good one.
So, yeah, I'll say, thank you for coming, and thanks for all the, all the residents for taking the time to come tonight. I think this is a good cause. This is a highway up there, and it has been for a very long time. It's a wide, smooth piece of pavement, and we know what happens in areas like that. People tend to not realize how fast they're going, and it is a thickly settled residential area, and an area that over the last 25 years, we've built a lot of homes, been a lot of projects up in that area, so the traffic has increased significantly, I would say, over the last 25 years. So some areas of town, it's really difficult to put sidewalks in, where we really need them to, like, like Wesson Road, or, or East Street, or Pleasant Street, windy country roads. We have a lot of them here, George Hill Road, a lot of... So this road, though, I look at, I think there's potential there to do this, because depending on where the right-of-way is, that's kind of the, the difficult part. We, we have, you know, we have town funds, we have road, you know, funds to do this. We've spent a lot of money rebuilding roads over the last, I don't know, 10 or 15 years, whatever we've done, and I think the roads are in pretty good shape or getting there. So maybe a sidewalk project is of value, especially here, and maybe with the right-of-way, you know, the land-taking can be difficult. If, if the, if the sidewalk cannot be put within the, the right-of-way, and I'm not talking about the roadway, the town right-of-way, then you have to do land-taking to, to be able to accommodate the sidewalk. And it's not impossible, we could do it, but it takes longer to go through that process to get that ability to put the sidewalk in a safe place, if it's not, if we're not able to do it in the right-of-way. And I'm not saying we, we're not able to, we just don't know yet. You know, we got to look and see where the road is put compared to the right-of-way that the town has there. But, you know, I'm with Matt, I think, you know, it's a dangerous spot, and it would connect, which I think gives it a lot of value. It's not just going to be out there as a sidewalk that leads to nowhere. So it's, it's going to connect to North and to the center of town. So I'm glad you brought it forward, and we'll vote on it at Fall Town Meeting.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yep, Mr. Alamo.
So first of all, I saw your hat, and you mentioned it. Thank you for your service.
Oh, you're welcome, of course, sir.
Sir, thank you. It's the gray hair, right?
No, sir. I can't help it. It was ingrained since I was young.
That's new. That's understood. Yeah, Matt, I, I see Laura. She's, and she talks a lot with her friends, so heads down, so mention head up, head on a swivel. You're talking a passion project for me, not so much on North Street, but I'm a walker, too, and it's wherever I walk, it's, it's crazy. And I could, I do not walk on North Street, but I do drive on it, and on Old Westboro Road. And, and I just, I'm, I'm astounded as to how fast people drive, so, and I think it's terrible. You can call me old and old-fashioned, doesn't really matter. I just don't think it's necessary to drive that fast. I think we can dare to be different here in Grafton. And adding a sidewalk would be a fantastic idea. You had me at hello, so you could have just finished right there. I do think it is important that we find out where these funds are coming from to pay for it, and I'm sure that we can do that. That's responsible, but I don't think you'd find anybody that, you know, that would be, think this is a bad idea. I'm not one of them. I think it's a great idea. Thank you for coming forward. Thank you for, for representing the folks in your neighborhood, and you get a yes from me.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Very much appreciate it.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you, sir.
And I, I know what you're talking about. I, again, I drove all four routes in Grafton for the short time that I worked for the Postal Service. George Hill is another wonderful issue.
Yeah.
One thing at a time up there.
Yes, just one more thing.
Yep, Craig.
So the warrant article, we want to make sure, I know in the last few town meetings, warrant articles that are on the warrant have been getting thrown out for, because they're not a legal warrant, and there's no explanation of it. It just gets passed over by the moderator, no consideration for the people that took the time to get their signatures to write the warrant article. And we have to make sure, our town moderator should make sure that these, that to help these people, or somebody has to, to make sure that, not just for them, but for anybody that's taken the time to go through this, you know, spend the time to do this, that the warrant article is written correctly and legally, so that town meeting can vote on it. I mean, what's been happening is awful.
Well, it's not like the people that submitted the petitions weren't, we didn't discuss it with them. So they, they know why it's going to be ruled out of order, right?
How does it make it on the warrant?
Because we don't have, we don't have a choice. There's 10 signatures. The language goes on...
So there's no, so we've offered to help write the article correctly, and they've said no?
Or they've submitted it the last day, and there's no chance for them to go and get further signatures if it's not done correctly.
Right. Well, I don't want to see that happen.
Yeah, so on this one, let's look at what we have.
Which, to digress for one second, is, is what happened in this case.
Yes. The format wasn't correct, and what I did was I turned around that afternoon and walked back up and down Old Westboro Road and got 60 signatures, or 55 signatures, and even though it was a workday.
Yeah, because Craig has a good point, and Evan knows of this, you know, is working with people on this. The, the key is that the verbiage has to be correct, otherwise, there's a chance at town meeting, you can't vote on it, you know? It's not a matter of if we want to or not, right?
Right.
So what's the next step then to, so this looks, yeah?
It looks as, as, you know, when we write a warrant article, we would have, we have different, a level to, to write. So we're going to have the mount, we're going to have all of those things. So what we'll do is we'll work with DPW to come up with a section in the explanation that talks about what the cost would be.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, even if there is a legal defect with this, which is real hard to know, there's a million different reasons why things go the way they do in Massachusetts, I, I think it's still a pretty decent referendum on where people want their tax dollars to be spent.
Yeah.
So I think that, that there's a pretty low risk at this point of it not having the intended effect.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah. And go ahead.
No, so is this the article that, that's spelled out on here?
Yes.
So doesn't it have to have a dollar amount?
We don't have one.
I understand that, but is that going to make the article, and I thought you had to have a dollar amount and where the money is coming from?
Right, so what we'll do is work with DPW and put that into the explanation of how we would do that. And then if people choose to, to pass it, then, you know, if, if we needed another bite at the apple to make it legal for, you know, the AG's office, we could always come back and do that, but we could knowingly move forward, because the people have told us that's the direction they want to move.
If it, just to say it doesn't pass town meeting, it's certainly something that Matt referenced, the, our Roads Committee, somebody did, I thought, you know, we could have DPW and, and our Roads Committee look at this as a potential project. I mean, so, you know, we'll see what happens at town meeting, but if it doesn't, it's something we can, we can look at.
Oh, absolutely.
Try and come up with a number for it, because we have annual funds that we, that we do road improvement and, and road projects with, so...
Basically, we look to DPW to prioritize the roads, right?
Right, of course, ma'am.
We could say that this could be a priority. How, I have a question, just how long is it mileage from start to finish, do you know?
1.5.
Okay.
From the corner of where North, uh, North Street intersects with Old Westboro, going, going all the way up to Wesson Road, it's 1.56 miles.
Okay, great. I've learned nothing, well, I don't know how that saying goes, but I've learned, being on this board, how expensive it is to lay down tar, or concrete, or whatever it is. You know, roads and sidewalks, it's incredibly expensive, and I completely understand. Pales in comparison to safety and whatnot. That's, I'm not making light of that, but it is incredibly expensive, so, so I think it's, there's valid points, just being cognizant of what this is cost, where it's going to come from, and how we prioritize that. But I think it's great for a citizen's petition, for the town, and there's always people looking for more sidewalks in this town, for sure. Everyone wants to be able to walk around safely, and we all know, traveling on that road, it's...
Well, it's for all of us.
Yep, for sure.
It has nothing to do with me, it's to make sure these folks are going to be safe.
For sure, yep.
And again, with budgeting, I completely understand. There was 2003, when we got the order to mobilize and deploy, they gave me a budget that I just had to look twice that to make sure it was correct, and in order to get a unit to stand up and go overseas and do our business. So I understand completely about budgeting, man.
Yep. I think that, you know, you're hearing support from this board, and so we will see, you know, kind of where this goes from here. We'll see you at October Town Meeting. I think you would probably want to be prepared to speak at Town Meeting, just as you did now, to explain to everyone who's there, you know, what you're looking for and why, and I think it's very compelling, so...
I will be there.
Great.
Madam Chair.
We'll also have the opportunity to go before the finance committee and do those reviews as well. There'll be, uh, more time, a couple more opportunities for you to explain the project.
Ready to move.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, just come on up to the mic, please, and just state your name and address first. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Karen Pollan. I live at 92 Old Westboro Road for over a half a century. I, um, I grew up there. I raised my daughter there, and now I'm with my fiance and my elderly mother. My fiance walks. Um, I just wanted to clarify, is this something you're saying won't go to the town meeting? Or will it go to vote definitely at town meeting?
It will go, it will appear. We're talking tonight just to, to discuss what will appear on the warrant.
Okay.
Um, so after this, it will appear on the warrant, and then it's up to the town to vote.
All right. I just wasn't sure when you were saying it doesn't make it there or gets passed over.
Well, what Craig was just trying to ascertain, and I think that Mr. Prissard has already met with him, um, with you, the petitioner, just to make sure that, um, the wording is, is just right.
Okay.
Um, because there have been times where if the wording isn't perfect, we actually can't vote on it during the town meeting.
Well, thank you for your help, Evan.
Yeah.
We'd like to make sure the wording is right. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, hi.
Members of the board, Kyle Perici, 101 Old Westboro Road. So I'm a direct neighbor of Bill. And also thank you for your service, Bill. I don't say it enough to you. I, I won't want to think, uh, to put a price if there was a life lost, one of them being the granddaughter that we're raising. So, um, I get emotional when I talk about that. So like he says, about 12 kids within 13 homes. So it's, it's a big factor for us. All right? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Carl, Mr. Perici.
Okay, anyone else? And we don't take any action on this, we're just hearing it.
Nope, this is just part of the process.
Okay, thank you for coming in, and thanks everyone else who came in to support this. We'll see you, if not before, at the town meeting. Or you can come next week to our meeting here. Okay, um, next up, we had, um, as a board, requested that we have an internal audit of the Affordable Housing.
We have one more citizen's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Back it up. Sorry. Um, so someone here for Faulkner Road?
Yes.
To accept it as a public way? I apologize.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're good. It's me.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Mulvic, 14 Faulkner Road. Um, I'm woefully unprepared compared to that gentleman was, but this is kind of a last minute thing. Faulkner Road is a private road currently, and, uh, we have a petition to make it a public road. Faulkner Road itself is, uh, if anybody's been down there, it's kind of a death trap. Craig, you probably know that, but, um, we weren't really sure how to go about tackling this. The ultimate goal here is to try to get us to have the town maintain the road. They just don't right now. We've had several residents on the road, and I believe there's 18, 19 houses on the road. Call the highway department, they come down, fix the potholes, do this, do that, make it more accessible. And they'll always say it's a private road, we can't do that. So the only option we have is to try to make it a public road, which I understand the exorbitant cost it would be to actually make it a DOT acceptable type of road. It's just a little back country road as it is right now, a dead end street, you know, and we're on the other end of town, almost in Milbury, Worcester Line. So we're kind of out of sight, out of mind. So moving forward, I don't know where we go from here. So like I said, ultimately, the, the goal, if we can, nobody that lives on the road even cares if, if it's a private road or a public accessible road. So that's what we're trying to figure out is where do we go from here? So what we've done, we've put a petition in to have it accepted as a town road, uh, and not a public road. So if that's what, we can move forward doing that, then, then that's what we'll try to do. Not, the question everybody on our street has is, you know, we all pay the same tax rate in town.
Right.
But we don't reap the same benefits that everybody else does. We don't have the town maintain the road like everybody else's roads are. They do plow it only because they need access for emergency vehicles, ambulance, fire trucks, things like that in the wintertime. But other than that, it's just not maintained. It's just, it'll, it falls apart. Luckily, we have a couple people on the road that do help out and maintain it as best they can, but they're getting elderly. And, you know, it's just not possible for the rest of us to try to keep the road passable, so. That's where we're at with that. So where we go from here, I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
You want me to speak to the next step? So, so you've petitioned the, the town meeting?
Yeah.
To accept this as a public way?
Correct.
What generally happens, uh, is that goes before town meeting, if town meeting votes to accept it as a public way, we then request, or commission a layout plan.
Mm-hmm.
Because we won't, we won't have a layout.
Oh, yeah, the engineering alone is gonna be, I, I understand the cost of that, so.
So then we do the, we do the layout, um, and then we put it into the asphalt management plan as far as when it would get brought up to standards.
Okay.
Um, one thing that we can do, and we, we just did this over on, um, Waterville Circle, is we do have access to things like Millings.
Yes.
And so what we did, say on, on Waterville Circle, we took that as a public way, made it a public way. We don't have the funds to pave that. We've got, you know, all these other things in the queue that were already slated for paving. So in the meantime, we've upgraded it with Millings, gone in, graded it out, made it better, not.
Right.
Not 100%, but better.
And that, that would be perfectly acceptable to everybody on, on our street.
Yeah, and then, and then, you know, then it's in the queue for, for paving, you know, a future date, which I don't know that one top of mind right now, but. But that's pretty much how we've been, we've been tackling this.
Yeah, this road, I mean, I used to live down the street and, and, you know, known Kevin my whole life. And, and there's a lot of residents that have lived on that street that have spent generations here in Grafton, you know, the Flemings and.
And if it weren't for the Flemings, the road would, would be impassable because they, you know, they're the ones that take care of it. But, you know, Bob's 85 or 86, Dave, Dave's pushing 80, and, uh, you know, they're, they're the last two that can do anything with it. They have the equipment, but that's gonna end soon, so.
Yeah, and to Kevin's point, I mean, they, they do pay tax. That's what I was, before you said it, I was thinking the same thing, and that's, I can't believe.
We pay the same rate that everybody else does.
The road has been there for that long and we've never made it a, a public way, you know.
I know this.
There's a couple other ones like that, like Harding Street and South.
Yeah, there's a couple of, there's a couple, but Harding Street's passable, you know. There's a couple of private streets I'm aware of in Grafton, just not many. There used to be a lot more, but there's just still a couple left. We're one of them, but I think we're the least passable one. It's not bad right now because Dave just did some work to it recently, so it's pretty good. No, actually, it's not that good, but it's, it's at least better than it usually is, so.
Yep.
Yeah, it's pretty.
And I can go on and on about.
You were there today.
You were there today.
Yeah.
On Faulkner Road.
I've been down there before, but I wanted to go before, right before this meeting to just.
Yeah.
Put eyes on it.
Did you go all the way to the end?
I did.
Yeah, it's a little rough.
So scale 1 to 10, what would you give it?
Like a, like a, like a one or a two.
Yeah, and that's, Dave just patched it up a little bit, so it's, you should have came by a couple weeks ago.
I was happy I was in the town's vehicle.
And that's the thing, you know, everybody's vehicle's getting beat up and.
I, I bet. No, it's, it, there's some pretty monster holes in that, yeah.
Okay, so this is the appropriate wording, um, to accept it as a public way to start?
Yep.
What should we do, what should I do personally, as far as, if the wording on that is fine, then we'll leave it at that, but should I add, detract or something, or?
No, so the way that it works, it's, it is what it is at that point.
Okay.
Um, and so again, um, it, it, the way that the process works in Grafton, it's a little bit funky because we don't really, we have a little bit of time to give you advice, but we don't always get that.
Right.
That full bite of the apple. So that's something we probably need to discuss as far as process goes. But, uh, again, my, my general approach has been personally, and I think the board would agree with this, is that if we got the town meeting in the fall and it's on some technicality that this thing couldn't be voted on, I, I don't think there is. I, I think that it's real direct, straightforward language. We're not gonna know what the cost is anyways until we accept it as a public way. You know, we understand the intent, and so the, the board would likely then pick that cause up and move it forward. That's what we just did with Johncous Terrace and Waterville Circle. Those were two private ways. Um, those folks petitioned the board or, or came before the board and said, look, we, we really need this, this done. And the board sponsored it from there on out and just took it and ran with it, so.
Good.
Um, there's a couple more, um, pro, parts of this process. One will be the finance committee.
Mm-hmm.
And then town meeting, and then we.
Will you speak to it, Evan, on, at the finance committee, or do you need Kevin to go? Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I generally do. I'm, I'm a, I'm a, uh, I don't know why I'm like this, but this has been a thing for me. No, I've been a proponent of, I, I don't see the value in private ways in 2024. I understand that in the 1950s, uh, when you had a campground that was, you know, and then it morphed over time. But at a certain point, it's not beneficial for the town to have these random private ways anymore. And we can't do them all at the same time, and, and I understand that, but it, it's always been kind of a, a pet peeve of mine that we have these public wa, or private ways that we need to get an ambulance down and, you, you know, if, if they're trying to put an IV in.
Yeah.
You know, or, or keep an IV in, that's a, that's a gnarly road to travel.
We had an incident on the street a couple years ago, I think 2018. I don't know if you recall this, but there were several state vehicles down there, and they were all appalled.
Yeah.
At the condition of the road.
Yep.
And, you know, they were made, uh, known to us, you know, and known to, actually to the town of Grafton. They came down and did a couple of repair work down there just after that, but then nothing has happened since then, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, and I'm, I'm not saying this is, this is right, but I mean, in, in most municipalities that I know of, um, they're not maintaining a private way that are left to the, to the landowners on the, on either side, or if they own to the middle, or however that works. And so there are some towns that have in their bylaws a certain set amount that they could spend on a private way every year to help with repairs. But personally, I think the cleanest way is to just slowly tick these off and put them onto the public way.
Well, that's what we're trying to do, is get the ball rolling here so that, I know it's gonna be a long drawn out process and it's gonna be expensive, but, you know, we're, we're willing to just, you know.
At least start somewhere, yep.
Yeah.
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 I would just suggest that you come to town meeting, Kevin.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I don't know what the date is.
We'll be there for that.
But yeah, and have, like, if Mr. Fleming or somebody, you know, get some residents out of there.
I'll get the whole street there.
And go to the, and go to the microphone, you know, a few of you.
Yeah.
You know, you need 10 of you, but two or three that people would recognize like you, you know, and tell the story.
Yep, we certainly will.
Yeah, great.
So that'll be on the warrant then?
Something worth to thinking, and we'd have to coordinate it, but, you know, maybe some photos of the street if you're able to.
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
It's a good idea.
Put them up on the screen.
Yeah, we can put them up on the screen.
It's October 21, Kevin.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, grab some photos. Wait till the, don't go today when it's a number one. Wait until it's like .5.
It won't take long.
Dig some more holes.
21.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks. Monday, October 21.
Sorry, I skipped along there. Um, okay, now we're ready for 4B. So the internal audit of the Affordable Housing Trust. Um, this was something that the board requested a while, a number of months ago, um, just to look back, um, over a number of years to confirm that, you know, everything looks good.
And, and, excuse me, and it, it does. Um, we were able to go through every account that is in our internal system that is associated with the Affordable Housing Trust. Um, we were able to pull every invoice that we've paid, every bill, and review each and every one, um, for its correctness and congruence with, um, town financial policy. Excuse me. And we found no anomalies to report to the board. So that's good for, obviously, taxpayer, um, security, but it's also good, um, to see that our financial practices are holding up and we're following them correctly.
Okay. Any questions from the board on that?
Madam Chair?
Sorry, I'm flipping through papers. Yes, Mr. Upton.
Yeah, just, uh, quickly, uh, in addition to following, uh, the town's financial policies and practices, each one of the expenditures that was made, uh, did get passed by the Affordable Housing Trust Council to make sure that the expenditure qualified, um, under the terms of the grant. So, um, I just wanted to give that additional assurance as well, as not only, you know, uh, did we follow the town's practices, but also we made sure that we were adhering closely to that grant.
Yep. And the only question I had on it isn't relative to the financial part of it, but just we talked about, like, just correspondence, looking through, um, that.
Yep, and so we, we have hundreds of, of emails. I, you know, we've been through it. I didn't find anything in there that gave me pause or would give me reason to send it to council to review farther. I didn't admittedly pay council to go through all of them, because I thought that would be, kinda, oh, that'd be, that'd be a, a steep bill for, for what it is, and I think I can recognize what they are. Um, so we do have all of that correspondence saved on the server. But there was, again, nothing anomalous in there that would make me say, here's a, here's a problem.
Great. I think that, go ahead, Craig.
Yeah, no, go ahead. Finish your thought.
I just, you know, I think it just is important that, um, you know, we do our due diligence on this end, and just to make sure that there were no anomalies, as you said, in any way, shape or form, so thanks.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Craig.
I was gonna, so it's, it's good that, I guess, what you said, Evan, is that the expenditures of the Affordable Housing Trust conform with the conditions of the grant.
Nope, nope, nope. So that wasn't, um, the, the Affordable Housing Trust attorney makes sure they're congruent with the grant. We were asked to look at, um, just the polis, the process and make sure that we did not, um, deviate from that process in any way from our, our side, and, and maybe Amory can, do you?
Yeah, I just, I don't, don't think it really, uh, for me, didn't relate to the grant necessarily. It was just an overall looking at, uh, what went on in the trust during a period of time and just assuring everyone that both financially and otherwise it checks out for us.
Okay, all right. Um, because as far as the expenditures of the grant, so I've been looking at some of the invoices that were submitted and some of the approvals that were made, and I would, I would like to have the Affordable Housing Trust come in, invite them in, and just walk through some of it, because as a business guy, I see us spending money or, or, or invoices getting approved that threw up a, a real red flag and a lot of questions for me. And I just want to make sure that we're spending, this is, this is town money. And, um, so it just gives me a lot of concern, so I would like them to come in and just kind of walk through some of this stuff and just kind of explain to me their thought process and why they would approve some of these invoices.
And so that would, again, just, excuse me, just be separate, um, from, this was really related to a specific instance that occurred in the spring and just making sure, um, not related to any project. Uh, just generality, or I guess general but specific, uh, making sure that all processes were followed, that there was nothing nefarious that was found, and I think that that's basically what Evan's assuring us, just relative to that. Um, Colleen, just briefly?
Colleen Roy, 53, Homewood Street. I am a member of the Affordable Housing Trust, and you're mentioning red flags and questions. Could you send those along to the trust so that we can be prepared to answer them when we do meet with you?
Yeah, and I was gonna say, even, they have a meeting on Thursday.
No, I, no, I'm gonna, I, what I would like to do is just have you come in, and you've approved all of these invoices for this development, and I'm just gonna ask you questions on, on votes that you've made. That's all.
Okay, so. So if I might, um, I'm just gonna stop it. So relative to this particular, um, agenda item, I think we're all set. So is that what you were going to?
You, you do have one hand on zoom whenever you have.
It is. Um, you know, for my part, I, I don't think it's appropriate that we request that the Affordable Housing Trust come in here to answer the questions of a single member that could be addressed at, at one of their own meetings.
Okay, so relative to this particular agenda item, I'm just gonna move on. So a little bit of a separate, um, discussion going on. Who is it at home?
Patty Eppinger has her hand on zoom.
Okay, Patty, just wanted to make sure that you know we're, we're speaking not relative to 1727 or any specific project. Um, we're just talking about a general audit that the board requested our town administrator to do a number of, of months ago. So is that what your question is related to?
Yes. Can you hear me now? Am I unmuted?
Yep.
Yep. Um, my understanding, and I haven't looked at the Affordable Housing Trust bylaws very recently, but that the bylaws state there should be an annual independent audit of the funds.
Yeah, I think that's.
And not an internal audit, but an independent audit. So that's my question generally.
Yep, thank you, Patty. So I believe, um, when I went to a recent Affordable Housing Trust meeting, they are potentially currently doing one, and if, and then starting in the, the new year, that will be an annual thing.
Perfect.
Yep, but again, relative to this particular agenda item, it really, um, doesn't entirely have anything to do with it. So I don't want to, like, bring up the specifics of this without being very specific.
Oh, that's fine.
Yep, yep.
I was just questioning to ensure that, to follow the bylaws, there's an independent audit that's in process, because it was mentioned maybe two trust meetings ago.
Yep, and that's certainly starting in the new year, and if not, there might be something currently, yep.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to move on. Um, so that's great. Anyways, thank you over there for doing that. And so moving on to 1727, um, Upton Street, this has evolved a little bit even over the last couple of hours in terms of, uh, you know, how this discussion might look. I wanted to put this on the agenda, um, for me, and I'm gonna, I don't usually speak first, so I hope that the board will indulge me to just kind of talk a little bit about where I'm coming from, and then we can open it up a bit. Um, I'm not looking to have a, you know, big debate. There are different venues, um, to, to get information, of course, but I want the public to understand and to know that I have listened to concerns. There's, almost all of us have gone to at least one, if not all, of the planning board meetings relative to this project. Um, so you do have a board that is quite engaged, um, in terms of what's going on with this particular project. And I, so I wanted to first assert that, that we are listening to you, whoever is contacting whoever, you know, on this board. And additionally, that I have been working very diligently to, to do our due diligence on this board relative to this project in, in terms of how it relates to select board and what our oversight is here. So that's kind of where I wanted to start with this, and I think that, you know, we'll kind of see how the discussion might go. There has been some information that has been, you know, very, brought to me, that's very specific information. And gonna go through the channels in terms of getting answers to various questions, and we'll continue to do so until all of the questions and concerns have been, um, identified and answered, hopefully. And that's not to say that they'll be answered in a way that will make everybody happy, but answered in a way that we feel comfortable with what has happened and what will happen. So I guess I will end my soapbox there.
Madam Chair?
Yep, Mr. Upton.
I would suggest that maybe at this point, um, I would suggest that maybe at this point, if Evan could just walk us through how we got to that memo, the process that we went through.
Uh, sure. So, just trying to make sure I arrange my thoughts. So, you know, having, as Emery said, a lot of engagement from this board at various other boards, people are there to hear other questions and concerns that come up, and they're not generally, they're not, they're not generally, they, they haven't necessarily been asked at the right venue, and, and that's, you know, partially because a, a lot of people, this is, you know, they're not engaged on a daily basis in local government, and local government is confusing. So, we had all of these questions out there, and, and in my conversations with council, it was suggested that I request two members of the board that are picked by me, so that it's not a subcommittee, to be able to sit down with town council and lay those questions out. And so, that's what we have done. And now it's up to the board to decide how it proceeds with that information. Is that a good...
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay.
And I'll add that I had some specific questions as well that I directed to Evan, and that's how we thought, you know, they might get answered and then disseminated to the board.
Absolutely. So, yeah, we had a, a long conversation. I think everything was captured. And I, so at this point, the board has before a memo from town council which addresses those questions. So, I think our next step as a board, I would suggest that we discuss what we do with this memo, and sort of how we proceed ahead. One of my concerns, I guess, is I want to make sure that the board is proceeding as a board with whatever actions we decide to take or not take with regards to seventeen twenty-seven Upton. And I guess that's all that I'll say about that.
Yep.
So, I, I want to make sure that we're all in lockstep and that we don't have the board being driven by individual members. I would agree with that.
Well, I was gonna say, I don't agree with that necessarily, because I think the, the beauty of, not that we shouldn't be moving forward in, in some sort of united front at some point, when all the chips have fallen, you know, and all the information has been gleaned, that maybe I have further questions or someone else does, but I think that people can have, you know, different opinions and kind of get there differently and disagree and, and maybe be against something or not, that, and I think that's okay. But I appreciate that, you know, that, again, part of, I had reached out to you at some point, Matt, you know, putting this back on the agenda just to have a, an open discussion, you know, as a board, right? A frank, open discussion.
Yep.
Relative to, to this. But I just wanted to preface it with, I've been as objective as I can possibly be, you know, over the last couple of months in terms of discerning information, you know, doing research and what have you, listening to people. It hasn't been influenced by any one person or, or the project, and it's just to make sure that this select board has, has done what it needs to do to protect itself, the town, the town's finances, et cetera, and just to kind of keep, you know, moving in that direction. That's kind of our lane in this, right? We're not talking about getting, making more units, or, you know, this isn't the discussion for this board, it's just truly like, things like the purchase and sale. Is it okay? Is, you know, are all the words correct, so on and so forth? So, that's the, the, the direction I've been marching to, marching towards, I suppose.
Makes sense.
Um, Mr. Jefferson?
I'm chair. Are we intended to have that discussion tonight, or are we intending to have a more serious discussion during executive session tomorrow night?
Uh, so, it was brought, someone, one of our board members just had concern with, with how that might look, so I'm not sure.
I'll, I'll say, you know, since, since we discussed it, I went back and forth with it a lot myself. To me, I think the, the door to this discussion was opened in open session, the discussion should remain in open session. You know, it's, it again comes down to, I think, transparency and accountability, and, and the public has a right to hear from us and, and make their own decisions based on the information that we discuss as a board here. I'd rather, I'd rather do it openly than in an executive session.
Yep. And again, that's why I put it on the agenda, you know, hoping that we could do this, so we'll kind of see where the chips fall, perhaps.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Upton?
Yeah, I'm gonna just agree with what Andy just said. I, you know, there are very specific reasons.
I understand.
You can go into executive session, and this is more for the public, I think, than the board, because I think everybody on this board knows exactly what those reasons are. I don't believe that anything that we have before us warrants going into executive session, so I would like to put this memo out, have people take a look at it, and then if the board wants to discuss what's in the memo or anything else relative to seventeen twenty-seven, then we should have that discussion in open session. That doesn't need to be tonight. I'd be perfectly happy just to, you know, agreeing on, as a board, as to whether, like, what the timing is for having this discussion. But I, I would feel uncomfortable going into executive session to discuss anything that's before this board.
And just so you know, it's not that I haven't put a lot of thought into whether to do this or not, and how to do it, and how not to do it, so it's been on the forefront of my brain, as Mr. Bissard knows, for a long time, more than a month, I would say. So, here we are. So, I'm doing the best that I can to direct this in the most appropriate way and not to, you know, do more damage than, than potentially necessary.
Yep, Madam Chair.
Mr. Elmo.
I think you're doing fine. I do. I mean, I, it's, it's complicated.
Oh, I know.
And it's also, it's also not, it's just not easy for everyone. There's, there's just some stuff that it's, some people can, are, are cool with the whole thing, and some people aren't, and it's not, it's a hard discussion, but you're doing fine.
No, I know.
And, and also, I think we're doing fine, and I think we're allowed to ask questions. I don't, I thought we could do, when I first came to the board and we first had executive session, it took me a minute to understand why we were doing that and what the, what the reasons were. It would strike me that some of this conversation could qualify based on what I understand for executive session, and that wouldn't be the worst thing. I think you can have a transparent, open dialogue tonight or any other night about this topic, and you can also have a, a more delicate discussion in executive session for a delicate topic, considering there could be some ramifications that might qualify. Again, I'm not the expert, and I've read things too, and it looks like, you know, in, it's certainly from what I've read, there's maybe not the full need to do something like that, but if that's something that anybody wants to do, we, we could do that, if it qualifies. I mean, if it's appropriate, if it's legally or whatever the rules are, if it qualifies, I think that's cool too. But I think we're all trying, and it's just, the, what I hope, would hope for, and, and I talked to my wife about this, and we were talking about just like commentary on this, and if we could just take the kind of like, the, the, the temperature down a little bit, it'd be great, because it's so unnecessary for it to be really dialed up. It doesn't need to be that way. And also, I don't know, I, I might have voted for this. I think it's, if you look at the location for this project, so we'll just talk about, we'll just talk about it now, a little bit. It's not the worst location, you know? I was thinking about like, where do you, where do you do this? I think people get frustrated about having two hundred and fifty units in their private, you know, single home development. You know, that's probably something people don't want. In this particular case, kind of is gateway to the town, it's been a bit of an eyesore, some of the stuff that they've designed seems, you know, pretty nice, seems too many to me, it's always too many to me. It's always a hundred and twenty, it's two hundred and forty cars, sorry about that, it's, it's so many cars by that area, but I, I might have voted for it. So, and, and I, and the people that I've heard talk about this, we're not saying they're against the project, they're against the process, they're like, they're like, they're confused by the process, they're, they're mad and like confused and frustrated, and they want to be a part of the process, and I get that, and I think that's cool, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. That's why it's like, the temperature's like, it doesn't, it's just so like, I, I don't want to do it, I don't want to do that. That would, I know it doesn't qualify for executive session, but that would be one reason I'd want to do that, because we just don't need people like yelling at each other, accusing and all that, and it's just like, let's grow up, we have forties and fifties now, I mean, I'm fifty-eight, let's grow up, and just talk civilly. And I think to vet this out makes little sense. I mean, I've certainly vetted out, makes sense to me, and I, I'm in a good objective place, by the way, and the last thing I just want to say is that I think we could disagree without being disagreeable. I think it could work, because I, I don't, I think I know where I stand on this, but if that changes, and my head in my heart, which both are the same, kind of driven by the, each other, then it'll change. And if it's four to one, I've been one in some instances, that's okay too. Three to two, whatever, it's okay. Not that we're, I don't even think we're voting on it though.
No, no.
So, it's already been voted on. So, anyway, here's my sound. I guess, I'll speak last on this one.
I might copy it. I reserve that right.
You know, Mark's, it's good that he says that, because it kind of puts it back in perspective, but I, you know, this project started to give me concern when I, when I joined the board, and, you know, the, the more I dug, the more concerned that I had. You know, I compare the, the RFP that the town put out, the response that we got from this one developer, and then what is before the planning board, you know, as a complete, you know, it's got, it's, it's a completely different project, right? So, it's like, I compare, I compare it to, what, are we?
We have, I'm sorry, excuse me, we have a legal document that says that that is not the case, and you continue to say things like this. So, we can talk about not wanting to disparage a project or agree to disagree and do so civilly, but misinformation is an issue here, and we have one member who continues to spread it, and that I take issue with.
It's not misinformation, it's one attorney's opinion, which we're not supposed to be talking about tonight.
Well, yeah, let's not reference.
So, I don't know why you're interrupting me and why you're talking.
Okay, so just, let's keep going.
So, can you stop talking?
Maybe don't lie.
I'm not lying.
It's not, it's not lie, it is quite different, the project is different.
This isn't funny.
Okay, so anyways.
This is, this is our town, and you have responsibility up here to make sure that things are done right. And in that project, there's about a hundred things that have been done wrong. So, let me finish my thought.
I don't need to be lectured by another member here. We have a legal document that states...
Well, you interrupted me. Can I finish my thought, please?
Okay, so if you, if you will, I just want everyone to have, go ahead, and, and absolutely, but I want everyone to stay in the, the lane of, you know, select board and what we can impact, go ahead.
Well, we're talking about the project, right?
Well, yeah, we're talking about what we can look into relative to this project.
And we're talking about transparency, so the people that may be listening to this can understand what's here and what's coming. So, to me, I compared it, why I had concern, is I compared it to if the fire department wants a new fire truck, and they put out an RFP to build a fire truck, they work on a specification, they send it out to companies, anybody that builds fire trucks can reply to the RFP. And, and the fire department looks at the proposals, and they pick a company to build them a fire truck based on the RFP. Fire department agrees to it, company builds a fire truck, and they deliver something completely different that they agreed to build. Would the fire department pay for that fire truck? So, that, in my mind, that's how I process this, okay? So, that's where I started. So, my goal is to make sure that it is done correctly, that it is, this is our property, this is like something that's being built in our yard, and I want to make sure that it's done to something that we wanted, because we control the job, we control the project, because it's our project. It's not a piece of land that somebody else is developing. This is ours. So, we should get what we want. And based on the information that I've seen, we are not getting what we wanted. So, that's kind of where I started. And then when I kept digging, there was more, there was just more things of concern. So, what I would offer is, we do have response from council on the questions that were asked, but there has not been an opportunity to ask questions about the response and what kind of, what perspective the, our council came from. So, I think I would like to have that conversation, I would like to have it in executive session, because I think there's things that potentially could happen, and I think some things like this, I think, so I guess what I would offer is a hybrid. We can talk about it tonight, if people want to speak to it, they can speak to it. We can go into executive session, and we can have him go through those answers, through the questions, through the answers, and give explanations to them, and, and then move on. And then if we want to release the document, we can release the document. But before we have a chance to talk about it as, as a board, I don't, I think it should stay with us, at least till we get explanations to some of these answers. That's kind of where I'm coming from.
Okay. Okay. Is there anyone here that wants, or any hands raised or anything like that, since I accepted other, yep? And, and then, yeah. Do I have to decide right now, relative to?
So, Madam Chair?
Yes, sorry.
I think we should just take a straw poll, or if you want to take a vote, then fine, as far as what we do with the memo. I'd like to make a motion that we just release it to the public, and we can talk about it tonight or at another time. But my understanding from...
Sorry.
Is, is that the potential reason that we would go into executive session, and the only one is that we had pending or very likely litigation.
Right, right.
That we needed to...
No, I understand, yep.
Right? So, there were, there is no litigation.
Yep.
There's no pending litigation, there's no, there just isn't. So, to me, it's not legal for us to go into executive session to discuss anything. There is, there's no contract, and there's no litigation. So, I just don't think legally we can do that, I feel very, very uncomfortable.
Okay, heard, you heard.
So, I just think that we should do a straw poll. If the three members of the board want to go in and into executive session, then I will shut my mouth and we'll do it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's fine.
Okay, sorry.
So, Madam Chair, Bob Carroll, seventy-two East Street, also been a member of the Information IT Committee for, I think about fourteen years now, so, and why this is relevant and why it fits into IT, because risk management, vendor management is a very important part of IT, and in fact, that's where most breaches and most risk comes into play. So, I was approached by a couple of town members and took a little bit on as a resident myself after sitting in planning board hearings, and then also watched one of the Affordable Housing Trust hearings, and I got a real sinking feeling in my, in my gut. So, I went through, and there's a, a process, a methodology to, to do in this, and you just kind of follow the, the breadcrumbs, if you will, and do the, the due diligence part. So, so with that, all the information is public information, this is all available on the website, this is all available on the various departments of state for the different, like in Pennsylvania, and Massachusetts, and Florida, so anyone can go look this stuff up, so I'm just connecting the dots for people. So, when I go back to the beginning, to the RFP, I look up GSX Ventures LLC, and I know someone brought this up before, that they're a Florida company, et cetera, et cetera. So, I did some digging, and the address that they list in the RFP is in Pennsylvania. There is no LLC registered under GSX Ventures in Pennsylvania. There is a GSX Ventures LLC listed in Maryland, but that business is not in good standing. So, I don't know why we would be taking or accepting an RFP from a business that's not in good standing. Also, on the RFP, Twenty-seven Upton Associates LLC is listed, that is not a business, not an LLC, never was, never has. So, again, and furthermore, in the RFP, there's legal tax attestations that were signed by the principal on behalf of Upton Ventures LLC, again, a company that doesn't exist, where they attest to the, the tax attestation and corporate authority. So, I know the members... So, I know the members said we have a contract, a legal document, I don't understand how it could be legal when none of these business entities exist, they aren't real. Um, if I go to the next phase, which is the amended PNS, um, that was amended with GSX Ventures located in Maryland, again, we amended and executed a PNS with the business not in good standing. So, I don't know where that falls, or we have to let legal weigh in, these are just, again, observations. So, um, so we'll take it from there. Um, the next part of this is the contracting and vendor management, right? And when we, you know, we, when anyone does or has worked on their house, for instance, you want to know that your contractor is insured, right? In the case of the town, um, you want corporate registration, these are documents that could be provided to the town, they're readily available and free, and the town should require them. So, just kind of rattling these off, you got the corporate registration, um, W nine, for those that understand what a W nine is, those should all be available. Um, and the accord agreement, which is the certification of insurance, so the town should have that in their possession before they engage. And then as a public entity, under Mass General Law, there should be a section forty-nine A agreement that basically attests to that they pay their taxes, um, nothing with respect to child support, um, and there's a whole bunch more to it. Um, if we go to the next part, which is, you know, accounts payable. Essentially, the town of Grafton is, um, getting invoices from an LLC in Pennsylvania. All right? Um, but there is no business, there is no LLC in Pennsylvania, it doesn't exist. On the other side, the payments, the transfers from, I think it's Bank of America that's used, those are going to Florida to an inactive business, GSX Solutions. So again, I'm not, you know, i- i- it could be a valid reason, could be legitimate, but these are facts. That's where the payments are coming from, and that's where they're going. Um, walking this along to the, kind of the next phase, which is planning, submitting the, um, the, uh, the application for the development. And the one I looked at was, uh, SP two oh two four hyphen oh three slash SPA, and that was dated four twenty-three. Um, the applicant is listed as Seventeen Twenty-seven Upton Street LLC in Fort Lauderdale. There is no corporation, fourteen, uh, Seventeen Twenty-seven LLC in Fort Lauderdale or anywhere in Florida. So I, I don't understand how that's a valid application when it was, the applicant doesn't exist. Um, finally, the, I think one of the members mentioned some bills and abnormalities, I have a whole list of those. Um, I'm not going to bring them up tonight, but there, there's a whole lot of it there. Again, um, I guess I'll entertain, any questions, um, put that out there.
Okay. On, on some of it, I have, you know, thought of, um, something that, you know, we can direct our town administrator to potentially look into, but, uh, I guess basically, it's more information that I'll have to digest here.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I think.
Mr. Almo, sorry, Mr. Jefferson.
I think, uh, Mr. Carroll, um, kind of adds, uh, evidence to the fact that, uh, we should try and release this uh, legal memo from council as soon as possible, so that some of the issues that he mentioned, um, which are clarified in that document can be um, readily available to the public.
Okay, so do I need to, um, have a vote?
Can I make a motion?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, Madam Chair, I vote that we, um, release the, um, memo that we got from town council with regard to all of the questions on this particular project, um, out into the public record.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Mark.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, this is, to me, this is the opposite, this is more reason that we need to go into executive session. Not release a document without having more discussion on it in private. Because if they're signing, if Bob is correct, and this applicant is signing documents with the town, putting his name and his company that does not exist, that's a legal issue. So why would we go and release um, an opinion from town council when he may or may not have this information, and there could be potential litigation, so to me, this is a reason to go into executive session, not to release something from council. That's, I just, that makes no sense to me.
Mr. Almo?
Is this even po- I mean, is that possible, that this is not a company?
There's just, I think, very.
Is that just pure speculation, is it just, is it?
No, I think that.
Is it just like, uh, honest mistakes and we offer some grace and we're good?
I mean, I think
It's hard to.
There's nuance. To, 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 I don't know who was talking, I apologize, but whoever, um, made the motion, I mean, there, there is there is, um, some discussion of that in particular in the, in the legal
Yep.
framework, I think that's where you're getting, so I think wi- without the well, the board hasn't voted, so I can't talk about what it says in here.
Right.
But, um, you know, there is, there is some response to, um, what, uh, Mr. Carroll was, was discussing.
Okay, so I have a motion, and I believe, yeah? Seconded, ready, right?
Um, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
We're having the board discussion on a motion here.
Okay.
No, I was just gonna add, uh, clarity to, to Mark's comment. So, anyone can go look up on any state, a company, and it's done that way by design. And you just put in the, the name and search the database, and it will tell you the standing. They do it in every state. It's public information, so you can, you can do it right now if you want, and look in Florida, and then it will tell you. And the, the states do that for a reason to prevent fraud.
Okay, so let's, uh, we do have a motion, thank you, and a second.
I, I, I definitely think we, Madam Chair, I definitely think we have responsibility and obligation to the people that, um, voted for us, we should talk about this in private.
Okay, so the motion.
Yeah, for, for, for half an hour, and then call it a day, and then move on, I'm not against releasing it. I just think that maybe we should probably talk about it.
So there's a motion?
I don't think there's anything wrong with that, like, it's full disclosure, it's cool, it makes, some of this makes sense, but, um, if one wants to talk about it, I'm not against it, maybe we should support that.
Okay, so hang on, so, okay, go ahead.
No, I'm just, I don't know why we're in a rush to get this thing out, like, what are you guys afraid of?
Well, that's okay, so we can just.
No, but no, it's, it's a legitimate question, we just got it.
Can I answer that?
No, we just got the memo, right?
Yeah.
So, we haven't even had a chance to discuss it with council, and you guys want to release it, if, if, you know, I'm not gonna vote to release it, but if it gets released, fine. But, you know, it might not be good for our town council to release that either, we need to sit and talk to him about this. And I don't know why you guys are afraid. You know, Andy doesn't want me asking questions, he doesn't want me saying that there's legitimate concerns that the project is different, it is different, so you know, and I'm not lying about it. So, I don't know why, we're here to protect the town. It's not all about, you know, um, doing this project, it's about doing the right thing. And I'll just leave it at that.
Um, so, uh, to me, the right thing to do is to follow the law. Sorry. To me, the right thing to do is to follow the law. Um, and open meeting law says that you can only go into executive session for certain reasons. Um, to me, this discussion just doesn't meet that criteria, so, so.
Yep.
Um, but in terms of, um, why so quickly, I just.
What to relea- I think the question, why, quick to release this?
Quick to release it, yeah, to, to me, um, there have been several points tonight that were asked and answered in that, that, answered in that memo, so, to me, as these things are being brought up, rather than having them just left out there as, um, red flags, um, those red flags have been addressed in this memo, and I just don't, I don't see, it's not a matter of being afraid, it's exactly the opposite of that. I'm so not afraid of the discussion, I think we just need to have it in open session.
Yep.
Let's get the info, because these are questions that came to you, Craig, from residents, right?
Some of them, some of them came from my own research.
But so these are, these are questions that we brought to our legal counsel, um, they've, they've answered, and so why would we not provide those answers? Look, it, you're right, you're absolutely right, this is an opinion.
That's all it is.
But, as long as we, um, preface it with that, and tell people that this is just an opinion, I don't, this, we should not be afraid of releasing this information and talking about it, that's, that's the fear, I think, it's not.
Well, I think we need to talk to council before we release it.
And, and I guess, just the last thing is, I just think, um, we should not be using executive session as a way to, um, avoid a sensitive topic, um, if the sensitive topic doesn't qualify as, under one of those reasons, so that.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so there's a motion made and seconded, um, relative to release this to the public. And I think we can end discussion, because we probably already have all heard what we need to hear. Um, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, so three, two. And then, um, we're not gonna vote on, so, so I guess that's that, we're gonna release this out, um, folks can see it, and I'm not gonna, um, I guess talk about executive session right now, I think we can maybe close this discussion for now. And that information will go out, and we'll see tomorrow, kind of where we land, if that's okay.
Well, what does that mean?
Uh, just means I just.
Like, like, are we gonna have, are we going into executive session tomorrow night, there's something scheduled, right, Adam?
There's something scheduled, yes.
We posted, yes.
Yep, and it's been posted. Um.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, could I suggest that we also just make sure a copy of that letter is sent to the planning board, because I know several members there had issues, or questions, I should say, um, that were raised, that were also outlined and answered in that document. I mean, I know it's gonna be publicly available anyways, but just that we specifically send it to the planning board as well.
Um, sure.
Yeah, I'll just can, make sure it goes where it's gotta go.
And I will say, I know the trust is meeting on Thursday, so if there's specific questions relative to bills and whatever else, I know I went to the last one, but didn't really know if I was able to answer, ask questions or not. So I do plan on going this week and ask my questions, um, that's another, uh, realm for this.
Um, Matt?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Me first.
Yep. Try to set, go ahead.
Um, just to temper everyone's expectations, so, the board has voted to release it, I still need to bring it back to council.
For sure. Oh, yeah, it's not like going out tonight or anything.
Exactly, I just don't want people to think, um, there's a process that would have to be followed.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. You may go now.
You do have one hand on it.
Okay. Recognize someone, you don't recognize them. Patty.
Sorry, and it's probably a moot point now, because you voted, but I was, I was waiting for a while, just to say, if the hurdle for executive session is legal action, there is likely legal action pending regarding this property. So, I don't know if that changes what was discussed as far as the release of this material, but I was trying to get it out there before the vote. I think that was what was said, was the only way that this would be discussed in executive session.
Yep. And you feel that there's pending litigation?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we're off.
You have one more hand on it.
Can't say yes to one and not to everybody. Yep, Mr. Prisby? Uh, Mr. Prisby, you've been recognized? I don't know if you can hear us.
You have us hanging.
Mr. Prisby, going once?
No, I think he's gone.
He just stopped off the meeting, so.
Okay. I tried. Okay, um, moving along, and I know that that wasn't wrapped up in a nice tight bow, but, um, we're doing, we'll do the best we can. So just wanted to, this has been something that I thought about previously, uh, just in terms of new board members coming on and um, even coming on this board and having, you know, some more information, I suppose. And, uh, so in our charter, which I had copied, and I've left half of my papers at home, but, um, there is a, uh, a small paragraph relative to code and conduct of, of board and committee members, and, um, you know, speaking just, I wish I had it in front of me, I'm sorry, but speaking generally about what is acceptable behavior and, uh, um, just general decorum, I suppose. And so just wanted to bring that up, and what I plan to do is kind of come up with a, a one pager, and I've talked to Evan about this, and he sent me a couple of, of, um, examples from MMA, first of all, and then secondly, from a few other towns. Uh, so to come up with a policy, ours is just, it's, you know, buried there in the charter. Um, and while it does have some disciplinary action, um, where you bring the person in, et cetera, um, just looking at some other towns and what they've done, um, with their policy, I think, you know, maybe we could come up with something like that, just like a one pager, everyone would get. And for instances where, um, there is a feeling of a board member overstepping, or again, I can't remember the verbiage there at the end of what we have right now, what is, what is it?
I, I don't recall.
Ah, sorry, I copied it at home and I left it. Yeah, so anyways, um, that, you know, we would just have something more specific in hand to everyone for times where maybe this becomes an issue. And just to remind people on various boards and committees to be cognizant of the way they speak to other board and committee members, to town employees, you know, to everyone in general, um, and not not doing anything that you, um, don't think would, would be befitting of, of being on a, a board or committee that's specifically um, appointed by this board, by the select board. Okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Just one.
Do you have it? Oh, sorry, were you gonna say something?
I was gonna say just something else, but Craig can certainly go first.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, that's fine, I think it's good to remind people how to be on committees and to be professional and respectful and polite. Um, we do have, so I'm, I'm for looking at some language for this, we do have, under the town charter, section seven dash eight.
You have it right there?
I have this.
That's what I was talking about, I know, I feel like.
You said code of conduct or something like that, so this is, this is.
Oh, no, that's separate, nevermind.
Yeah, this is separate, so this is removal and suspensions, and I'm glad Emery put this on, because I did want to talk about, about this a little bit, because we do have language in there. Um, and I think word applies to us as if, if, you know, we appoint a lot of, a lot of people to a lot of committees in town. Um, and so with that, I always felt like they were a reflection on me, they're a reflection on this board and, and the town. And that they should conduct themselves in a respectful way, and if they don't, I felt like it was our responsibility to address that. So, in all my years of doing this, it's happened, you know, only a few times where it was so bad that, you know, that it came to that point where we would have to have that discussion, which is not an easy discussion to have, but I think it's our responsibility, so we need to have it, so. Um, recently, I was at a meeting where I observed that, saw that, or heard that happen. Um, and, you know, it was, it was, it was awful and unfair and, um, inappropriate, I guess is probably the right word, so I don't, I guess I wanted to put it out there, um, without talking about names or anything or specifics, but is the board, how does the board feel about that? I just feel like we need to, you know, because if we don't address it, then that means, I guess, we're accepting of it, and then if it happens again, we're accepting of it, or if we address one and not the other, I just feel like we owe it to the people that serve on boards and the people that are in the, in the audience. It, it happened to me when I was he- here in the, actually, years and years ago, the building committee for the Milbury Street School. I was a volunteer on the building committee and we went before the ZBA, and it was like, it was terrorizing, you know, and the way that I, I had never, you know, I'd been on the planning board before that and on other committees, and then when we went in there and, and got crucified by them, um, our whole committee, um, was just unbelievable, and then it happened a second time, and, and so, um, you know, that was the first time that it happened, but anyways, I'll stop rambling, but it was just, this clause, I think, is part of it is our responsibility to do this, and I think we, we need to do our job and address some things, so.
What I liked about, one of the, the, um, the town, sorry, I'm starting to just not be able to speak, one of the towns that Evan sent me, unlike ours where it goes straight into, uh, like, kind of a very severe reprimand, you know, where the person comes in, and then there's this process, a very specific process, uh, it was, the first level was a letter from the select board, or a call, or a, a meeting, or sorry, from the chair of the select board. Um, you know, kind of step one, and then, okay, we do that, it happens again, come on into the select board. As opposed to this, uh, ours just seems very, um, formula isn't the right word. formal isn't the right word, but punitive. Uh, so I think that that could be like, that is, to me, a good first step, that the chair would reach out to someone who, go ahead.
Uh, now, to finish your thought.
Yep, so anyways, I, I can, we can send along the, the examples, and then I can maybe bring something up, um, and present it, bring it next time or the time after. Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I, um, I think it would, uh, I agree with, with what you've said, Emery, just in terms of, you know, uh, what's in the charter is, that's the last thing, right? It's sort of-
But there's nothing in the middle.
We've tried other things, and it just doesn't work. But, because I'm, I'm also sensitive to the fact that, um, meetings get heated sometimes. People lose their minds here and there, um, and, you know, if it's not something that is systemic, you know, I, I think we need to have some, uh, some, I don't know, accommodation for, for certain behaviors. Just because people are passionate about topics, and things do get heated sometimes. I'm in favor of, um, exploring some language, which, you know, for us, it's really the, this really kind of squishy subjective conduct unbecoming, which I think is what you're talking about, Craig. So, um, I'd love to describe what conduct unbecoming looks like, to, to help boards and committee members, like, know how the board thinks about that.
Yep.
So that when we bring somebody in, or when we decide, you know, uh, I've seen boards censure, instead of removing them, you would censure them, um, is it, is it an option, some type of notification, or I, whatever, whatever we decide to do, um, that the board has some clear language to stand on, to say, this is what it was, um, and this is how the board is thinking about, you know, our, our conduct, um, that's unbecoming, um, that, that we observed.
I think this level, that, that the specific town, I forget where it is, it was, um, I think it was your last one that you sent me there, Evan, but sorry, Bill, if I'm too far away. No, it's okay, that, I liked the fact that the first level was, uh, a reach out from the select, the chair of the select board, whether it's a call, or conversation, or a letter, what have you. So, you kind of would have that opportunity, that this is what I observed, or this is what I was told happened. This is why the board, as I understand it, feels that that is or is not appropriate. And, you know, let's move, move beyond that. So there were kind of like lower levels, so.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll work on that, um, it's been something, like I said, I've had on my brain for a while, so we'll try to bring something, yep.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just curious, i- i- it's kind of getting into specifics, I don't know if it's something that you read examples of. Maybe it's just something to think about, uh, as the draft goes forward. But, how, um, I guess, how would that process initiate? Would that, is it, would it be something that is at the discretion of the, the select board chair to decide if, uh, that was, you know, conduct unbecoming and, and to reach out? Or is that something that we would discuss as a board, and then the chair reaches out on our behalf? Any thought on that?
I guess the good news now is, you know, everything's videoed or audiotaped, so, you know, it's not, even if someone else brings it to one of us, we can easily look it up. And then, uh, yeah, good question, you know, again, trying to, did you, were you gonna say something, Evan?
I, I was just gonna say, maybe it, it makes sense to send the information that we have out to the board and put this on the next agenda, so that people can see how different towns have addressed it, because some, some are really vague, they don't, they just say, don't do it, but they don't tell you what would happen if you did. Um, but then you have other ones, like, uh, Dayton has a really nice boarding committee handbook, that's a little bit more involved. And so there's, there's just different iterations of it. And then I think, I think part of it is looking at what's out there and then deciding, uh, you know, the Grafton way, and then adapting it kind of in reverse. But we don't have to necessarily reinvent the-
Right.
The wheel.
And I think to your point, Andy, like, maybe that is getting a little bit specific, because it almost, you know, again, this, hopefully this only happens once a year, if that, um, and so it would maybe depend on the circumstance, right? To some degree.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
That makes sense, thank you. And, and I will also forward out, the MMA has a, they did a presentation, um, about code of conducts for boards and committees, and that kind of lays out the different kind of approaches that each, that different towns can take.
Right.
So, I think it's all pretty helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Great, thanks. Um, moving on, opening the fall town meeting warrant. I'm not even on this right now.
No?
Yeah.
Yep.
Madame Chair?
This is your, your night to shine. This is exciting, right? Go ahead, sorry.
This is a big one for me. I move the board vote to open the town meeting warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, great. And then, next update on Feedback Earth. I know that, uh, we got a correspondence last week, and then we saw something this morning as well. Um, so thank you for that. And, uh, as I understand it, that still have some issues, and I guess, other than that, if the board has any further, but anything new on your side, yep?
Yep, so I've been in contact with, uh, both Rep. Representative Meridian, um, and DEP, uh, who continue to work together to try to come up with a longer term, uh, solution. Um, it has been a little interesting that I've been getting information from Feedback, um, but I've also been getting, um, conflicting information from DEP, uh, kind of stating that they don't agree with what Feedback Earth is saying. So they, they continue to monitor, they continue to push back. And, you know, the, the amount of calls has decreased. I think partly that's because it's, oh, and I'm not, this is totally subjective, I'm not, but, uh, you know, it, it's been less. So it, there's two, there's two things. Either the smell is less, or people are tired of reporting and they haven't gotten any action. It's probably some combination of the two. Uh, Will and I were on Creeper Hill Road today, and could definitely smell, uh, you know, a sourish smell that I related back to, um, kind of that, uh, when, when we were only dealing with bread and some other things. Um, that's what it reminded me of, and, uh, that was when we were out on Faulkner Road, because it's right, it's right there. So, um, you know, I, I think everybody, at least on our side, uh, is still very much engaged. We're having daily conversations with DEP, um, and, uh, continue to monitor all the reports and, and this and that. So one, just one little tidbit that I, I wanna put out there, um, that I, I thought was important to hear today, that I heard from DEP, is that, you know, often we hear that a complaint was made, but it was not substantiated. And so the DEP doesn't, doesn't really consider that a, 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 a thing. So the complaint is the complaint. Whether or not the other person, by the time they got there, smelled it, is not, not a huge factor for them. They wanna know that the smell, that, that someone was smelling something, and that it was impacting their peaceful enjoyment of their property.
Which makes sense, because what we heard was like, by the time the person gets there, right? Things have changed, the winds have shifted or something, right?
Yep, and we've, we've, we've had firsthand experience of that, getting calls here and going, I'm gonna take a ride up, and then you don't smell anything, or you do, but it's down the other end of the road now, because that's kind of how this, this goes. Um, so anyways, I just wanted to put that out there, that I, I think that, um, while n- n- not nearly fast enough for, for residents, I'm sure, but it does appear to me that the DEP is, has a very pragmatic approach, and it's not just, uh, we said it's fine, so now it's fine. They're, that's, that's not at all what's happening. They seem to be digging in quite, quite deep.
Okay. I know, just to note, um, two, uh, things I think I've read online, or maybe it's, people have sent me messages, I kind of can't remember, but two things relative to the smell changing or decreasing, seems that it's like nighttime operations now, and so the, the folks around there feel that they might not be smelling it.
Yep.
And then even just like the temperature and, and whatnot outside might, might, um, might impact things. But you mentioned like pushback, like you were, somebody was, there was pushback from someone, was that Feedback Earth, or from?
No, I, I think I mean, um, I don't remember everything I said, but-
Okay, no worries. It was at the beginning, you're talking about DEP and Feedback.
But I think DEP is, they're not, I, I guess what I was trying to get at is, DEP is not just receiving information from Feedback and saying, oh, okay, great.
Gotcha.
They're, they're pushing back and saying, okay, this doesn't, this isn't right. We don't care if it's substantiated or not, that's not what we do. Here's how we're proceeding, those type of things. That's what I've been noticing.
Okay. Is there anyone here for, relative to this? Sorry, go ahead, Andy.
I just had one question, while we, if somebody wants to come up while we talk. So one of the concerns that I've seen online and, and through some correspondence is, is, um, again, that operations are taking place at night, and that the, the, the sniffer, uh, doesn't verify at night. So we're just reiterating for everybody that, that is not an issue for DEP. Continue to call the hotline and, and record complaints.
Yep.
Regardless of the hour, it doesn't matter if the sniffer's gonna come out and do that or not. Has there been any increased communication between Feedback and the town? Now, you said you went over there today, are they back to daytime cooks as well, or is it still isolated just at nighttime?
Um, if you could give me one second, Andy.
Sure. Just to preface, that's something that came up in-
Yes.
The outreach meetings that they, that, um, they had, I think it was, Mr. Offen was actually pretty adamant that they should be better in their communication with the town when they're considering, um, changes in operation times or, uh, ingredients. So I'm just curious if any of that is coming through.
So this week, they have expanded into small duration daytime trials of the system's effectiveness.
Okay.
I, I don't know how to, uh, quantify that for you, that's all the information that I, that I have.
Right.
I just wanna make sure they're hopefully communicating with the town.
Yes, and they're, they're communicating, um, we're getting a weekly update from Feedback that also goes to DEP, so.
Oh, good. Oh, from Feedback, okay.
Right, but that's, we're having more, we've had more frequent communication from DEP, and DEP has been including us on kind of what they're, they got going on.
Okay. And did you end up reaching out to them about the paving, or something?
Uh, I haven't yet. I, I kind of, I have some other, uh, concerns that I'm trying to vet before we do that.
Okay, anything else on Feedback, and was there someone, anyone here? Just wanted to make sure if you sat through this whole thing, okay.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Allen?
So it's not getting better?
Well-
It still smells terrible.
Better, but still smells, yeah.
And we're still getting complaints?
Yeah.
And I think people probably are giving up a little bit.
Yeah.
Well, the messages, don't give up, because that helps us and helps DEP.
Our answer then is to just make, keep making phone calls?
Yep.
Madam Chair?
Sorry, yeah?
Yeah, I think, it's, even if there was not a single complaint, it's, it's not better.
Right.
This is way too short term. If they just decide to cook at night, and then nobody complains, that, that's not solving the problem.
No.
The, the, the funk is still there, so, um, you know, as I said in the last meeting, if we go a year and there's very few complaints, then fine, I think we've solved the problem. But them, like, adjusting in ways short, very short term, to try to reduce the complaints, that's not a reflection, a good reflection of their long-term operational model, that, you know, so I, I just wanna be really careful that in this, you know, short, next few months, or whatever, that the complaints may go, may go down, but that's not necessarily because they've fixed the problem. It might be because they've just changed their schedule, or that they're avoiding using certain ingredients because they know those cause complaints, but they're intending to go back to them, like, once this is all kind of gone away, like, that, you know, I just, uh, to me, this is a-
Do we have a timeline then?
A long-term issue, you know?
Yeah, 'cause I mean, it's not working, it's terrible.
Would you call it the funk?
The funk.
The funk? How do we get rid of the funk? And, so what, what is our timeline then?
So, we are beholden to some degree to the state and what their action is. We don't, we don't have a jurisdiction over air quality. That's essentially what it comes down to.
But it sounds like that, that, in terms of a positive motion, it seems, it seems that it's going in a positive direction in that respect.
And I'm being assured that they're doing what they need to do to, to do stuff at the state level.
So we just have to keep pressure, you know?
And I, I've, I've reached out to, um, certainly Dave, um, but also, um, the DEP folks just on the, we're still, we're still, you know, moving, moving forward here, right? This is coming up with a long-term fix. Whatever that, that happens to be.
So again, you know, it's, as a board, we are still on this for you guys, you know, gonna keep, uh, keep at it. We'll keep it on the agenda and we'll keep bringing it up. Um, okay, so moving on, I think, uh, any select board reports? Mr. Jefferson?
Got one, um, not a board or committee, just went to the, uh, Collectibles Fair hosted by Grafton Rec, uh, this past Saturday. Just wanted to thank them for, uh, another great year of that. They expanded the size and, and vendors again this year. It crept out from the municipal center gym into the hallway and into the bowl locker room. Lot of, lot of familiar faces, uh, wandering around doing shopping there, ran into a lot of people, so, um, it had a, had a, a good steady traffic flow, and, um, I just find that stuff neat anyway, so it was, I had a great time. I convinced one of my kids to come along with me, which made it even better. So anyways, I just, I just wanted to thank Rec for putting that event on and, and, um, their continuing efforts.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Um, TA report?
Yes, that's me. Um, so not a lot of change since you last met. Still waiting for our Milbury Street to really start in earnest. Um, North Street, um, we've gotten every, all of our ducks in the row, we're just waiting for actual mobilization on that, which should be fairly shortly. Um, Depot Street, I just keep on here, but again, we don't have a lot of control, so we'll, we'll know probably just before they start, and we'll update this at that time.
I just have a question on Milbury Street, so it's coming from the airport the other day from Worcester. So, where those things are, whatever it is, like, not bales, but there's something all along.
Like the, the, um-
There's some demarcation right now?
Erosion control.
Like, how far away, how far up does that go? It's, it's way up on people's property.
Yeah, no, so that, that's a, we, we have to put those in place per, um, I think it's DEP water regulation, um, but it doesn't go all the way up to that.
Gotcha.
That's just, that has to be beyond the, the point where you're gonna do your construction to make, to keep anything that you were gonna, you know, get, you got a thunderstorm and it washes everything out, it's supposed to keep it in the site.
And we're doing both sides there.
Correct.
All the way.
Yes, be, and, and the reason for that, I'm sure there's more than one reason, but one of the major reasons is that because it's a federal grant-
Right, right.
It requires it to be on both sides of the street.
Just, I can't envision kind of on the, the left side there, uh, by Cronin Brook, or whatever that is.
Mm-hmm.
How they're gonna do it, okay, thank you. Not to believe this, go ahead.
Nope, nope, you're, uh, okay. So Fitzpatrick, we're still looking at, we're trying to, trying to, if we can get the, the requisite material, we'll start in October, which it is now, right? No?
No.
Oh, God, it's September. My daughter's birthday's next week, I should probably keep in mind what month I'm in.
Yeah, don't wish it away.
Yeah. I'd be okay with October at this point. Um, but, uh, so yeah, so we're on, we're still on target for that. Working to finalize the fall bid process with our consultants for that whole, uh, George Hill, Fay Mountain, Sopeleland area. And Main Street, um, I'm leaving this on here, because I think there's a couple of small, small spots that we're not satisfied with, but by and large, most of the tree planting and hydro seeding is, is complete at this point.
Evan, what is the fall bid?
To go out and get a price for doing the, the work.
Okay, so you expect to have a bid out?
Yes, sorry, so we're, we're, yeah, well, that's what we're aiming for, so that we can hopefully collect, um, uh, RFP responses throughout the win, during the winter months, where people are looking for work, and then have a spring start, and hopefully, and, and avoid, we went back and forth and back and forth, and, and, and we just think at the end of the day, while I certainly empathize with those who live in that area or travel that road, but avoiding winter conditions is probably going to save us in the long run than it is, you know? There will be some work that we can do during winter conditions that will have no effect either way, and we'll, we'll certainly do whatever we can to, to get some kind of progress. But I think, you know, waiting till the end of frost season and, and then moving in, in earnest is probably the smartest way. Uh, paving, I won't belabor this too much, but it's ongoing. Uh, we just were up on Pigeon Hill Chestnut area, so Chestnut hasn't been done, but Pigeon Hill, um, and, and I think it's Woodside, Horseshoe, kind of all half, it's about half done, I would say, um, you know, anecdotally. But, and we do continue to make progress there. Um, I'm sure people have seen the trucks out and doing it, yeah, we can move.
Yes, that's great, that's a lot of streets.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Right, so.
Knocking it out.
To be happening in quick succession, too.
Yeah, not for nothing.
Yeah. I, I, uh, I, yeah, we're, we're moving. Um, in fact, I've, I've been going out before the select board meeting every time, because I, the, it's different than what it was when I asked for an update on yesterday. They really have, you know, they, they, they move pretty quick, so I like to go see it, too. So the cupola, the column bases have been reinstalled, so we're really close on that. Hopefully, in the next several weeks, um, all the rest of those columns will be completed, and we'll do- And we'll do final paint and then hopefully remove all the scaffolding and that. I I have not, I just.
Did William?
I've been up there. It's still cool.
I just, I just use the drone from the ground and take a picture of it. That's close. You guys want to go up there, just let us know.
I do, I'll be in touch.
Yeah, Grafton Select Board member falls from library. Details at eleven, okay. Um, so Regional Music, oh God, Regional Emergency Communication Center. Um, we are nearing the end of our architect's solicitation, so we are doing interviews tomorrow and then the, um, oper- the, uh, governance board will vote to award that contract, and then we can start designing, uh, in earnest. Uh, ninety-five North Street, we are actively revising, um, we, obviously I met with, um, CPC and we're working our way through that with the hopes of bringing that back in front of the town in spring. Um, library flood update, I'm gonna call this ninety-eight point five percent complete. There's about five tiles that need to be replaced on the wall, but the carpet is done. The shelving has been put back in place. Um, the racking in one of the rooms, the appliances, the s- the plumbing, all of it is back where it needs to go. Um, there's a little piece of the backsplash and then, um, insurance will release that project, but staff have been in there, it looks like moving books back into the right spots and so we're we're right there. So looking forward to getting that done. And then, uh, just, um, oh, other updates, we, we don't have to really go that far into these right now. No, you can go to that page, I forgot I had that page. Um, so the only, the only other thing that I wanted to just just mention, uh, beyond these kind of standing things is that we, um, I did go to EDC last night, um, they had invited me to come and and have a conversation, so um, I I believe that their plan is to um, kind of solicit some feedback and put together what they think is, are the the next steps. Uh, you know, mission statement wise and goal wise of things to, uh, pursue economic development for the town of Grafton and then bring that back to the board and pitch it. We had a conversation last night on whether they should come here and hear about it, uh, you know, what your vision is, or come up with kind of what they're hearing and come back. I suggested that they do some of the groundwork first and then come back. Um, I just think that it's probably a more productive conversation than just the general what's economic development question, right? And that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Evan? All right, moving on to correspondence. Do any of you have any correspondence they want to talk about? Um, I have a couple. I just wanted to highlight, uh, the letter that we wrote that, or that we got from Mrs. Cleary, um, over in my old stomping grounds, um, and just, uh, it was both a disappointment in the policy, uh, at the clerk's office relative to being able to get in there and get things notarized, and I think that we'd still try to push on opening that office up a little bit more. But then equally, kudos, um, to your office and, uh, to to to, um, Ms. Hyde and also Mrs. Kelly um, down at the center of COA. So I wanted to just bring that up. And then also Bill Yeomans, thank you for your note, and, uh, I really do thank you for your work, um, relative to, you know, groundwater and and protecting our drinking water, you know, into the future and supplies. And I certainly will continue to carry that torch, but also look forward to having you continue to to carry that torch. Um, and that's all I had. Anyone else in correspondence? Okay, and resignations, uh, we have one resignation from the planning board?
Yep.
Sounds like me a minute ago.
Madam Chair. I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Andrea Bresnahan from the planning board.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? I want to just thank Andrea for, um, for her time on the board, both as, uh, the associate member and then jumping into the role as a a full member and having been on that board during, you know, particularly um, tur- turbulent time in in some ways, and I appreciate the the knowledge that she brought. She came very prepared at all times, and so I I certainly wish her well. Uh, so is motion made and seconded? Any other discussion? Barring none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
All those in favor? That's why I kept saying, anyone for feedback, okay. Any public comments, anybody at home? Nope.
No hands on Zoom.
Okay, I'm moving on to meeting minutes.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes for July sixteen and July thirtieth of two thousand nineteen as written.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
All those in favor? Okay, we have adjourned at eight fifty-six.